I'd like to recall the Suffolk Central School District Board of Assembly meeting. The time is now 8:06. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Matthew, your school report?
Yearbook distribution began last week for the seniors and other yearbooks have been distributed throughout the week. The advisor of the yearbook class is Ms. Danielle Ross and the editor in chief is Scarlett Edelson. Fifteen members of the yearbook class put together this year's book, which consisted of over 250 pages of spreads and tributes, including world news, ESPN highlights, and students' personal accounts of travel, food, and what makes them fully charged. This year's theme was "Fully Charged," and it was the 100th edition of the yearbook. It also included a Suffolk alumni page spread honoring those Suffolk alumni who have come back as faculty members, including Mr. Canty, Mr. Johnson, Mrs. Connolly, Mrs. O'Connor, and Mr. Loebberg. And overall, it was a fun memento of another amazing school year. The New York State Global Regents Transition Exam was today. Final exams start tomorrow. Regents exams begin on June 12th. Tomorrow night is the senior sports banquet. The final Suffolk High School concert, spring concert, will be Thursday, June 7th. June 19th will be the cap and gown distribution for seniors. And on June 20th, there will be the first ever clapout, in which the seniors will put on their cap and gowns and will be bused to their former elementary schools. Seniors will then parade around the halls enveloped in the applause of the youth. June 21st, there will be the senior graduation at RC State.
I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the Suffolk Central School District Board of Assembly meeting that occurred May 13, 2008, at 18, as so stated. Thank you, Monty.
Second.
Thank you, Matt. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's see. All in the same. Okay. Dr. Adams, do you have any comments at this time?
No. Well, yes, I do. Sorry. It has recognition of school board members for outstanding service. You know, it's a volunteer position, so they put in a lot of time at school board meetings. They put in a lot of time in training. So the New York State School Board Association, the overarching organization of which we belong, recognizes school board members for various levels of achievement. And the first person I'd like to recognize is the Board Achievement Award. And this goes to Mr. Matthew Kern for leadership development training totaling 75 points. And the second certificate is for a Board Excellence Award. This will be going to Teresa Monahan. And this is for Leadership Development Opportunities totaling 150 points.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting for public participation on action items only. That includes what is listed under items 2.01 through 2.30. As a reminder, public participation will be open for a 30-minute period. Each member of the public who wishes to address the board will have three minutes to do so. Please approach the podium, state your name, school affiliation, or village of residence. If you could also leave some contact information, either email or home address, so the board can follow up if necessary. Address your comments to the Board of Ed. And although we do not engage in a back-and-forth conversation, we are listening to what you have to say and appreciate your comments. Remember however, that your comments are to be addressed to the board by number 7 of Policy 1230, 1430 to 40. Please do not discuss concerns regarding individual, district personnel, or students. Anybody?
Hello, my name is Andrew Dale, Village of Suffolk. And I have two kids in the school district. I'd just like to list up a couple of important dates. July 5th, 2017, July 12th, 2016, July 10th, 2015, July 29th, 2014, July 17th, 2013, August 7th, 2012, August 16th, 2011, September 7th, 2010, September 1st, 2009, August 22nd, 2008, and September 18th, 2007. And that's as far as the website goes back on the Village of, for Suffolk Central. Those were the dates that 2.1 is going to be voted on tonight. Action item 2.1 has always been, for at least for the last 11 years that I can find, always waited for the new school board to come in and take office before they voted on it. I have to be really honest with you, this, it's unconscionable that this would all of a sudden change tonight. It seems like there is a true agenda and people are in fact serving with vengeance. It's an outright disgrace. At this point, I would basically say that this is a move that right now that would actually have Mr. St. Lawrence blush. So if you guys plan on voting on 2.1 tonight, best of luck with that. That's really unconscionable and has been out of the norm for the last at least 11 years, which is what the website has shown. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, Board. My name is Angus McKenzie. I live at 10 Overbrook Drive, Aramont, New York. I have two children in the district and I am a trustee-elect for this board. I am in agreement with Mr. Dale with regard to what he was just talking about with action item 2.01. I find it objectionable that we are, at the end of the day, shoehorning a person in at the end of a term when you have three new board members that are coming in and we have two board members that aren't here this year. You could go ahead and say that, you know, that this is a job. But again, Mr. Dale said that this has 11 years gone by, that this has never, ever happened with them. And, you know, I find it objectionable that we're going to allow this to happen tonight. We've never had, in my entire life here in Suffolk, somebody who's coached two varsity sports in the same season. Two varsity sports in the same season has never occurred. Maybe a varsity sport in another season. We've never had this before. I would urge the board to please just table this matter until the new board comes in and people can revoice their own opinions and be ready for this situation. Thank you.
My name is Melissa Reamer. I'm also a Board of Ed-elect, addressing this to the entire board, and I hope everybody can hear me okay. I agree with Angus and with Mr. Dale. I think that these agreements haven't been voted on before by an outgoing board. With especially three new board members coming on, we should be part of the decisions that are being made for the following school year. Also, I agree with Angus. How can one person possibly coach two separate teams? And that's exactly what I said to the paper today when they called me. It's like saying that one person is going to coach the Yankees and going to coach the Mets. How can they do that? You have two different teams that are probably competing at the same time. So really think about what's going on. Thank you.
Joseph Revania. I have two children in the district. I just noticed the point that Miss Crim just alluded to about the appointment of coaches for the fall. It's flat outrageous that they would, this boy would rule on his coaching picks for the fall. It makes zero sense. And as a fellow coach that's been coaching college tennis and high school tennis for the past 15 years, it's flat almost impossible, if not impractical, to coach two sports simultaneously. The date, for the most part, they're at the same timeline stuff. And to prepare two teams well can't be done. And I just, so this audience knows, I was the tennis coach at Rockville Community College for five years. I took two teams to the Nationals. And I also put, one at the high school level, I won a state championship. So I'm well-versed as to winning and what goes into preparing young men and women for competition. It's flat impossible to do three sports well and keep everything in order. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Melissa Heschelani. I've had three children in the schools, Edna High School, and Middle School, and Cherry Lane Elementary School. I just want to point out that on May 15th, the voters overwhelmingly shut up the polls and voted for change. And that's mostly because we feel that you're not listening to us. You're not responding to us, you're not addressing the community, you're not even listening to the students. We have voted three new board members in to change that culture. I'm asking you to allow them to do their job and to not push ahead and decide something that they should by rights have the right to decide and speak for on our behalf.
So, anybody else before we close the call? Okay, I will close this portion of the meeting. I would like to use a consent agenda for action items 2.01 to 2.30. If any board member would like to item pull, do not, so anybody welcome to pull. I know Monty, you said you wanted a couple.
Thank you. As we reviewed, I am pulling item 2.30 for a simple question. If you would, start with that. And I'm also pulling two other items that you have there. 2.01 is one of them and 2.07.
Okay. Anybody else want to go pull for discussion? Okay, so Angela, we're going to pull 2.01. You got them? So, Chair would entertain a motion to accept items 2.02 to 2.06 and 2.08 to 2.30. She just wants a simple question. Oh. So we're going to just correct, we discussed? She's not pulling 2.30, just a simple question. All right, good. Okay. Anybody? Thank you, Monty. Second? Thank you, Matt. Discussion on 2.30?
Okay, so 2.30, I just wanted to review what the figure for the hotel has been done. Make sure.
It's the GSA designated amount for a month or a year for that location.
So GSA rates for June for New York area is the base?
For all day.
For all day.
Yes.
And so it's a minimum of what the actual cost is? This is, I mean, do we historically, do we historically just approve the amount that the GSA approves or do we need discussions or do we approve the range?
We historically approve the GSA amount. Now what the business officials recess will be touch base with the three members elect and they'll discuss a way to submit a letter or a tax intent form to the hotel. And I think one of the hotels indicated that they would honor the GSA rate. So we're still working on that.
Well, we could, a lot of times the hotels will honor it. They have to make some calls and see if they're honoring the rate. It's either, are things GSA rate or is the conference hotel whatever that is? That's it?
Right. Because this was not a conference, there's no conference rate. That's why I'm asking that.
And it's the GSA rate we've always wanted them to have.
All right. So hopefully, maybe we can negotiate.
Sometimes it happens.
Stop.
They have to, they have to go in form and they might be able to do it.
And I also was concerned about the rating that it didn't say for individual. Is that still okay? Are they working right? Each person? It doesn't say a rule per person, it just says a rule per night?
Every person's a rule.
Right. So that's assumed in this language?
Of course.
Perfect. That's all I have to ask you about. So we're good? Okay? So, all those in favor? Signify by saying yep. Aye. Aye. Sorry. Opposed? Aye, either way. Okay. Okay. And now, let's change a motion to accept item 2.01. Do I do them together separately? Okay. I got away 14 years not doing this, so apologize. Separate. So 2.01, Monty, discussion. All in favor?
Motion? Yeah, we're going to have a discussion first.
Okay. Okay. So, this item includes multiple personnel appointments. I have requested that one item gets separated from the rest and that apparently didn't happen or couldn't happen. Dr. Adams has been helping out with this. I've requested that one item be voted on separately so that I can vote differently than the other. Is that impossible to do at this point or doable?
I think you can do that, Monty. So, under the professional personnel report, you're wanting to pull, well, I don't know what you're wanting to pull.
Well, we can't, we can't really name names openly, but I mean, they should have been, yeah, they should have been listed separately at my request, which was made in advance once the agenda was up. If it's too late to make the items separated as a separate item, then...
That's up to the board. So the board would make a motion to modify the professional person mail report to whatever you want to pull down.
So let me start by making a motion first that we tabled this item because of past history. The whole entire report has been voted on in July as opposed to June. And if you have a reason why we are doing it, you know, we'd like to discuss what those reasons are. So my motion is to table item 2.01 for a future meeting, possibly for the org meeting in July.
Second?
None? I'll say that then.
So, motion?
Motion failed. No second? Okay. So, do you want to have any special on this? So this is the extent of my discussion on this item. I should, yes, I will refrain the rest of the discussion for 2.07.
Okay. So now...
So you don't want to modify 2.01?
Are you going to do that? You want to modify?
You all, you can make a motion to modify 2.01 to pull it out.
I think, I think I'm comfortable voting on this as it is. I don't spend any more time. And 207, I will ask for another discussion.
Okay. So, motion to accept 2.07?
No, no, 2.01.
2.01, I apologize. So we'll, hold, Matt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's staying?
I have stayed on 2.01.
Okay. Thank you. And now, motion to accept item... Motion to accept item 2.07? Memorandum of the minute. Come on.
For discussion, some of the items pertaining to this memorandum are of confidential substance and were discussed in executive. So my questions in public are general, overall questions that pertain to particular individuals on this MOA. And so with no names mentioned, I would like to ask about the concept of, first of all, coaching girls and boys teams during the same season and how the schedules may or may not interfere. In looking at both schedules of both across country, girls and boys teams, I personally was able to see some conflicts. And I am concerned about these conflicts coming up during this...
Can somebody answer to that? It's a discussion, so it's a question.
It's only for us to discuss.
Yes. So, I'd like the administration to respond to that.
Andy, would you come up and explain that?
Thank you.
Can you repeat the full question?
Sure. So, in looking at the past season's schedules for boys and girls season, there were situations where on a given day, the teams were in different locations. There are times when I have learned through conversation and some of your input, that they are together practicing, but there are other times when it's in the best interest of both teams to be in different locations. How do you plan to resolve that? And if you can give us...
There is some flexibility within scheduling and we'll always have two coaches.
Speaking to my... There are issues allowed by your...
Andy Gutroni, the athletic director. There's some flexibility within scheduling where we can try to minimize that. It's ultimately going to happen, probably a few times within the schedule. Another, some of the major meets like counties, sections, they will be together, so it wouldn't be an issue. And we're maintaining four coaching positions. So having said that, we're always going to have a minimum of two coaches regardless of whether one is named head coach or not. We're always going to have two coaches at every event.
So if I understand correctly, we're creating an assistant coach additional position? Am I understanding correctly?
Right. We had two head coaches, two assistants, now we're going to have one head coach, three assistants.
So at any point in time, two individuals are going with the team. How will you make a distinction which team gets the head coach at a certain day?
Well, that would be discussion with me and the head coach at the time that it happens. We'll look at the schedule, we'll manage it the best we can so that there are very few conflicts where we wouldn't be pulled in one direction or the other. And then we'll make judgment decisions based on that, so that's fair for all the kids.
I mean, is there any financial advantage to the new arrangement that the district is...
Financial to the district?
Right.
The money will be basically the same. So the head coach absorbs some of the differential from dropping the other head coach position to an assistant. And that's what the MOA is for.
So financially, we're talking about the same cost?
Yes.
Is it exactly the same or is there any difference?
If it's different, it might be pennies. It's not, it's a variable.
So this is a model that is brand new to Suffolk Central. We have never done that, as far as you know?
Yes. I mean, in winter track, we have one head coach with more than twice the amount of students. I couldn't tell you exactly how many, but, so sometimes, sometimes in winter track, they have to face the same type of thing. Most often, they're in the same location and it's able to be worked out without a problem.
What is the disadvantage to waiting on this appointment until we're closer to the season? Perhaps we can appoint a head coach for each team?
I've been very clear with...
So they don't have to share their head coach?
I've been very clear with Dr. Adams and with Steve Walker in the past two years that I want to keep moving up the appointments mainly for insurance purposes, starting July 1. If we have them appointed ahead of time, I know if they're running an offseason practice, we don't have an issue. I had a discussion with the state executive about a year and a half ago. And since then, I've been trying to push them up. I hope to have the winter coaches approved at the next meeting, if I can get it done, and the, and the spring coaches soon after. I've already posted the winter positions and had people apply.
Okay. So in terms of cross-country, is summer training an official training?
No, optional, they're all optional practices. But, I mean, one of the reasons our programs are so strong is because our coaches continue to put that time in over the summer to give those kids those opportunities.
Right. But it's not, it's not required and also it could be coached by assistant coaches and a head coach at that point that can run the summer practice.
Yes.
So it shouldn't really mean that we have to decide on who is that coach in the fall for both teams right this minute?
Well, technically, they're supposed to be board-approved. If any of them are going to be insured to run offseason practices, so I don't know that putting it off is going to help.
Right. The way the MOA reads, reads for the full season, the whole year. We didn't split the summer from the fall season.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The way the MOA is written, it's talking about a full season, not just the summer practices. So I mean, we could have, we could have had a different wording where we can have a summer practice, they can zero now, and then have a full time.
Well, the thing is, contractually, summer practices are not, I can't require a coach to run offseason practices or summer practices, so we can't show up in there contractually. You know, I mean, I, you could say there's an underlying expectation that we hope our varsity coaches put in as much time as possible in the offseason to give our kids the opportunities that they need. But with regards to that, I can't, I don't think we can put it in there because I can't possibly require them to do that. Technically, I think the cross-country season will begin on August 20th.
Have we ever posted this position for an outside coach to apply?
Repeat the first part of the question?
We only internally post this or did we also externally post it?
Internally post only.
We've only internally posted.
Well, the RTA members own the positions.
Right. So we have come across a situation where we've had that, to ask the union if we can post this externally. We haven't gotten this far.
If we've asked you if you posted externally, well, I mean, you post it internally first. And if you don't get, you know, the, you can't, you're not able to fill the positions, then you go external. You know, usually call the personnel to see if we can advertise.
What window of time do you usually have to have that internal post? How long has it been posted for?
The internal post, they typically post it for two weeks. So I'll post it on, say, a Friday, and they'll have to let me know within two weeks. And I'd say if you're a returning coach, you can just simply send me an email. If you're new, and I ask that you send me a resume.
Nothing to happen when?
I'd have to look at my emails, but I can give you that answer.
Okay. And so, we're coming up with a brand-new model to the district. I'm understanding for...
Correct.
Something we haven't done before.
Correct.
Monty, it may be something that we haven't done before, but it has been done. We know how to work this.
I only stopped because the mic turned off. So let me finish my sentence, please, Paul, and then I'll have to hear everybody.
I put you out. I'm sorry.
No, it turned off. So we're coming up with a brand-new model. And, and the intent is, how are you going to evaluate this? How are you going to see, you know, how it affects both teams?
Well, I mean, I walk through practices on a regular basis. I go to a lot of the meets. I mean, a lot of people have seen my face in these things and so, you know, I can judge certainly on that, just in the fact that I'm there all the time. But, you know, often I'll sit down with coaches at the end of the season to talk about how the season went. I interact with the coaches on a very regular basis as to what the problems are, if there are any, you know, if there's any struggles and what we can do to remedy it. I mean, I have very regular conversations with all the coaches, particularly the varsity coaches.
I think it's important to also, it's important to also speak to the players, to the kids, our students, about their experience and... Thank you, but I'm really not paying into...
Thank you, but I'm really not paying into what's happening. I really would like, part of the evaluation of whether that new experiment that's going to happen is successful or not, a big part of it is the students' accomplishments, their stats, but more importantly, their feelings, and the fact that they feel supported. And that's going to now become the girls' team and the boys' team. And I am personally...
So you're basically asking me to hold exit interviews with certain students on the team to get their feelings on the occasion?
I think every student, every student. I think a questionnaire going out...
I don't think that's going to happen with every student. I don't have that kind of time, Amani. To be very honest with you, I could look at the seat, I could certainly talk to the seniors, and that's something Steve Walker and I can discuss further.
One second. I think a printed questionnaire would go a long way, just so you hear from everyone. I understand you, Andy, I'm the first to say...
If I want people's true feelings, I'm not going to send out a questionnaire. I'm going to sit down with them and talk.
Besides that?
I mean, I don't know that I'm necessarily, by sending out a questionnaire, that I'm going to get the answers, the true answers that I'm looking for. You could have a group of kids that's quite filled out together. I'd rather look them in the eye and sit down with them and hear what they have to say.
And it would be great to hear from everyone to an extent. We could do a combination of both. I'm just making a recommendation. You're going to do what feels right in the end, but I'm recommending that we hear from everyone in some shape or form. And since you don't have the time to hear from everyone personally, if maybe, we can put something out to both teams, because both are going to be affected by the decision made tonight.
Right.
Thank you.
Dr. Adams, any further questions?
Anybody else? Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to accept item 2.07. All? Second. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Aye. Thank you. Okay, so now, 3.00 information items. Suffolk High School Seal of By Literacy, that report.
Do you need mine? No, let's try this one. Is that working? Okay. So, thank you. It is a great pleasure that I share with you that four of our graduating seniors are going to graduate this year with what is called, from New York State, a Seal of By Literacy. This is a new designation to the high school diploma that was just, last year was the first time anyone had the opportunity to do it, and we're really proud to be the second district in Rockland County to be able to provide this to our students. And a Seal of By Literacy is awarded to students who show a very high level of proficiency in English and in another world language. And so, we had, it's a very rigorous process. In order to show this level of high proficiency, it involves assessments, projects, in some cases, AP exams, and the process to put it together while the state sponsors it and makes it available, it's up to the district to create the process within the guidelines that are given. And so, I want to give credit to the World Language Department, the Chair Melissa Luciano, who also worked very closely with Anita Sirello, Nancy Rodri, and Mike Tully, for putting together the process we used this year at Suffolk High School. So we have four students. Ryan DiCosta is earning the designation in Spanish. Alexa Ferris is also earning it in Spanish. Christina Phillip is earning it in Chinese. And Sarah Taborda, who's a student who came to us from Columbia in middle school, is earning it in both Spanish and French, in addition to the high-level proficiency she's shown in English. So we're very proud of these students. They actually do get a seal on their diploma, and I have a picture of the plaque that was given to them, that I'll just pass around on my phone when I'm done talking, so you can just see it. It's really, it's beautiful, and it's a wonderful designation. We're excited for these four students, and look forward to many more of our students earning this designation in the future.
Is it awards recognition?
It's awarded locally, because the district awards the diploma locally, but the opportunity for the Seal of By Literacy was made available through New York State Education Department. Last year was the first year it could be earned.
Just by district selection?
Yeah, just the same way advanced regions diplomas and other types of diplomas.
Thank you. Thank you, Lee. Okay. Discussion items. Dr. Adams, I think you have something?
So, of course, with discussion items, there's no vote taken tonight, but this is a project that was assigned to me a while ago, and I'm going to pass around the pictures. And this is pursuant to policy 7500, which indicates that building plaques or other memorials may be authorized by the board. So this is something that's not done by committee, it's not done by the superintendent, it's done by the board. And so, we were approached by a group that wanted to memorialize two veterans that died during Vietnam War, and that they had also played on, or in the stadium, not necessarily on the field, because obviously it wasn't that field, but at that location. And it brings, you know, you've been briefed legally on this, but there were kind of two locations that the group that approached me looked at. And one was putting the plaques on the wall near the entrance into the stadium. So the first picture that I sent around to you is the white wall, you know, it's about four feet tall, and putting the plaques there. Just for perspective, that's 21 by 14. That's the size of the plaque that they want to put there. They'll be brass plaques. They're very attractive in terms of what it looks like in a picture, but this gives you perspective as to the size. The second option, I think that's Mr. Veltiti that's got his back to us in that picture, was either to put it up on the bricks above, or to put it up on the wooden part of the press box. Putting it up that high, people probably are not going to notice that as well, and there was some discussion that maybe they don't notice it as well on bricks, but it was kind of 50/50. You know, some of the members that he brought with him thought it would be a good idea to put it on the wall, and some thought it would be a good idea to put it on the bricks. But ultimately, this is something that the board has to decide, not me. And so I just wanted to bring the information to you to look at, and if you have questions or Amani to follow up with, Mr. Veltiti, be glad to do that.
Okay. Any questions?
I just have a question. The two plaques that are already there, the one on the left and one on the right, who they for? I don't know what it says, to be honest with you. I think we need to get some brasso and clean that up, so it shines and you can see it. It looks like it's been weathered extensively. Andy, do you know what it says? Is it McConnell Field?
It says McConnell Field.
The one on the left.
The one on the left.
And I don't know what the one on the right says.
If you need to fix it up there. Are the new ones the same size, or bigger than existing ones?
They're smaller.
They're smaller than the ones we're looking at?
Yes. Yes.
They might be really hard to read, even on the grid, but they're smaller.
I think the best location would be on the white wall.
And those are the only recommendations, one of those three, they have to place that.
Yes, that's correct. We talked, either on top of each other, so vertically, and we also look at it horizontally. No preference there.
Should be at the same level with the others, because below that is too light.
And that's a good point. So maybe you just keep them parallel with, right at the blue line.
I guess my question, Dr. Adams, is this a one-year thing, or is this going to happen? Because that might, that may help our decision, you know, once you guys, we have to make the decision where we should go, and it's going to continue.
That's hard to answer, in the sense that this is a memorial plaque for people that have died in service to the country, and I hate to say that there's going to be more, but, you know, we've been an extended state of war for a long time in our history, so there's a possibility that a Suffolk graduate that's serving in the military could pass away.
No, it's just my understanding that, you know, that if something in the future, they would want to put additional plaques on, so if it's something that, you know, I mean, if we want to talk about bounds, we can always bound, you know. I mean, I think that we should put it in the best and place possible, in my opinion. What is, what's the process? What's the next step? What, why do you need an answer by? How do we vote about it?
They would like to be able to install the plaques by the first home football game. So, to manufacture that? Yes, so if the board wanted to make a decision, the next meeting, or July, or, I probably wouldn't want to wait until August because of the manufacturing time, I don't know how long that will take.
I thought those were already made?
I thought they were too, but then I was told they were not made.
Oh, okay. So they're not made?
That's what I was told the last time, yes.
I remember that.
Yes.
Another question?
So, no additional information. I'll find out what the existing plaque say, and then figure out...
I mean, are we ready to vote on this?
No, we don't think we can vote.
We can't vote today. Are we ready to vote at the next meeting? Is there something we want to just put on the next agenda?
Well, okay, we'll have some information.
Is there a...
I don't think there's any additional information.
So, I mean, it sounds to me like we would be ready to vote at the next meeting. Is that, we're ready? Are we agreeing with that? Okay.
Existing one, yes.
Pretty little chipping around, especially if there's going to be some sort of a ceremony.
Dedication or whatever, yeah.
And this is just, you know, just, also added, this is in proximity with the seat that was donated by the American Military Appreciation Club at the same stadium.
Yes, that seat's right around the corner, and the club's contacted me about having another bench installed, but they haven't shown me the location that they want to place that.
I mean, it's probably a great idea for the club to also be part of that dedication that's about.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. 5.00 public participation. At this time, the chair will open. Up the meeting for public participation on any district business. As a reminder again, public participation will be open for a 30-minute period. Each member of the public who wishes to address the board will have three minutes to do so. Please approach the podium, state your name, school affiliation, or bill of residence. If you could also leave some contact information in your email or home address, so the board can follow up if necessary. Address your comments to the board of education, and although we do not engage in a back report conversation, we are listening to what you have to say and appreciate your comments. Remember, however, your comments will be addressed to the President of the Board, and that pursuant to policy 1230, 1400, 3240. Please do not discuss concerns regarding individual district personnel or students.
My name is Josse Kevani. I have two children, one that's in Juvario, and one's in Montebello, which is a school. Yeah, one of my, I own a marketing company in Janey Beer, and one of my clients wants to donate a turtle poo to Field Day on Friday. I know there's a lot of the rate tape in the district currently for donations, but we're prepared to donate to Field Day all the goody bags, balloons, and mascot, as well as $300 to the district, you know, as an extension of goodwill to the community. I've been trying all day to speak to money regarding that, I know it's the last minute, but I don't think it's that difficult to take a donation, as well as, you know, we have to provide the goody bag to the kids on Friday. That could be a number of things. We're thinking it'd be a water bottle, you know, and maybe like a pass to come, turtle poo to all the students in the district. The kids were taught this year, I think it'd be a nice reward for the kids at the end of the day. And as I said, I know it's the last minute, but we're asking the board to sign off on us to provide all the necessary, you know, our mascot, maybe a case maker also, if the board would like that for the students, that might be nice, you know, as well as, we'll give you $300 to the district, you know, as a thank you. But that would be, as I said, getting back, you know, pushed back all day, and I don't know, you know, what the procedure for this. I apologize for coming at the last minute, you know, but I think, I'm sure that the Montebello PTA and the school, I had to check, and $300 on me. It's a Suffolk Central school district, I'm not joking with this, you know, it's real money, and we'd like to, you know, just provide the goody bags, and if we could give out balloons to the kids, that'd be nice. You know, and the goody bag, which would probably include, you know, a water bottle, a good one that comes to our facility, turtle poo, look in Spring Valley. It's a party place, and we want to get more vibe with the entire school community. If that's of interest to the district, I know it's the last minute, but we'd ask for the board to sign off on it.
So, have you reached out to the principal, Teresa Montebello?
Yeah, I was told that, because I spoke to the school this morning, and they said that it has to go to the district, it's on school property. I understand that the school isn't, the school is not, the OHS school isn't on the middle school, where it's being taken place on the field, so it's district issue. I reached out to them this morning, and they directed me to the district.
So, recommenders, why don't you give us your contact number?
Sure.
And then, we can take care of it from here and try to get in touch with Teresa and figure it out from there. But give us your contact information.
Thank you.
I'll take that.
My daughter would love to have you guys there. Let's, with the speaker group.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Hi, my name is Helene Collins. I'm a parent of three boys, two whom have gone through high school, one who is a junior this year who's on the cross-country team. And I felt after the last discussion here, before you wrote, there was some, I had to rebuttal, and I had to go on record to just speak kind of about the laissez-faire attitude about having one coach, having a varsity coach that's coaching both the boys and the girls. We've had success here because the coaches have strategically planned the meets that our runners go to. I feel like it's an injustice, and I feel personally, as a son who, this, sons, my sons, and this has really been their identity, and have had tremendous, tremendous success with this, that we're putting them at a disadvantage. And to have somebody have said that, well, they'll make a decision, and they'll sit, and they'll talk, and they'll say, well, the varsity coach will go to one of the meets, and the assistant coach will go to the other, I think it's a really unfair compromise. And I think that when you're at Van Cortlandt Park, where the elite are running, and the girls are going on one day, and the boys are going to Schenectady, and they're elite races, and we're trying to put our students and put our athletes, as we do in the classroom, up against the best, to get the greatest performances out of them. So I have to just personally express my disagreement with the fact that it's okay. Competent assistant coaches, and I'm a coach myself, and I understand that, but I feel that there's been such experience here and deep thought that goes into the planning, and it's not saying I'm going to have a parent come, you know, who's a nice chaperone, who's going to show good support, and, you know, a happy, positive spirit, that doesn't necessarily do it. And it's that commitment and that relationship that our athletes have with our head coaches, and the depth of those relationships that you've heard for months and months and months and months, that spur them on, that help them to get to that next goal, to beat that next time. They're doing it for their teammates, they're doing it for their coaches, and to not have that varsity coach there with them, it's not, it's just not fair, and it's just not right, and it's just not well-thought-out, I guess is what I want to say. And I implore you to think about what Amani said, and to reconsider, and to think about the depth of what really goes in. Nobody knows cross-country like a cross-country runner. It's not just going out for a job.
You now set up a situation where you have pitted an athlete against his former coach. Can't say names, I'm going to say the girls' coach against the boys' coach. You're now in a situation where you've put two families, 50 years association in this school district, the biddies of the Guciones in this mess. This should have been handled internally and not got to this, and worst of all, you now put the children in a mess. Who are they going to support? The coach that they came here for six months, or their new coach? What is going on? How did you allow this to happen? Very, very disappointed, and I compliment this young lady who spoke up. Are you retiring from the board in this? Are you retiring from the board?
I would like to.
Yeah, like, like, did you?
I would like to.
Okay. But here's what I'm thinking. This vote came, I've only been here twice, the president ain't here, the vice president ain't here, this lady here asked, please think about what you're doing, and nobody had the courage, because I told you, we went to this mess in Pearl River, nobody had the courage to say, stop this madness, settle our own business, and get on with all the other stuff. I can't believe this just happened. I lived to it in Pearl River, and these poor kids are stuck in the middle next year. It's disgraceful.
Hello, how's it going? My name's Joe Ligio. I am a former southern, southern track and field athlete and cross-country athlete. A few years ago, my college application essay was published in New York Times, and there's a picture of me in the paper, and in that picture, I'm standing on the track, the aforementioned track at the high school, the middle school, I should say. The reason I think that picture was taken there, it's because I asked it would, to, it'd be, I can't talk, I asked for it to be taken there. And there's no discussion of, you know, track or cross-country in my application essay, but the reason I wanted that picture taken there, and that's the picture I wanted published, was because I feel my experiences that I've had on that track and with the running experience I've had at the school has been so important to me, and I know a woman that just spoke now was talking about the sense of identity that comes from running, and it's really present in this community, and it's present within all these kids. And I feel there can be no greater disservice done than not really respecting that identity and not really listening to these kids, and listening to the opinions that are so present and so strong, and you can't look out at these people and, you know, deny how much they care about their coach and how much they care about this identity, that, you know, it's monumental to them. It means so much to them as it meant to me enough that, you know, I wanted that picture to, you know, represent who I am. So, with that being said, I'm really disappointed. I'm a current Manhattan College student. I hear these things from these kids who continue to keep me updated on the board's position and the community's position. I can't go home without reading something in the newspaper about these meetings and what these kids are trying to do, so I think some really bad things have been happening, and you need to start listening. Thank you.
Again, my name is Most Ash Chalati. I have a child right now in Suffolk Middle School and in Cherry Lee. One of the things that you've done by ignoring this problem for months is that you have eaten up the public participation portion of this meeting for months, that I'm getting constant calls from parents saying that they can't talk about anything else, because everyone wants to talk about biddy, except for the Board of Ed and the children. So I think that is a disservice. But I'm going to take this moment to talk about something else, and school safety is my topic tonight. On Election Day, two things struck me. One, I was discouraged at the overall voter turnout, but I was pleased to see many parents that I had personally asked to vote with me for change had come out in force. And two, I questioned the wisdom of holding an election in our schools while class was in session. The doors were unlocked, with no way to identify voters by sight, anyone and everyone was allowed in the unlocked school. Adults were literally weaving between lines of six-year-olds going to art class. With the current culture of fear for our kids' safety in school, why wasn't the school closed for the day where the polls moved to Village Hall? On the topic of safety, a fellow community member recently emailed the school board about our safety team and committee. The main concern expressed in that email was specific to the lack of parent organization members on the district safety team. Because of growing concern for our safety in our schools, this parent decided to research the safety requirements issued by NISA. It was found that NISA requires parent organization members, not only in the district safety team, but also on the building-level teams. This requirement is clearly stated in the policy found on NISA's own website, and as well as our own website and our very own board docs. An example of safety team from a neighboring school district was provided, and the contrast was staggering. They had five parent members and compared to ours, zero. Since the district safety team is appointed by the school board, the email went to the school board. Unfortunately, no response was received to the first email sent, so it was followed up by a second email, which was also, went without a response, was also completely ignored. This is just another example of how our district and school board has consistently shown a lack of respect and complete disregard for the community's input. In this case, community involvement was mandated by NISA, and neither the district nor the administration nor the school board members requested that community members be included. In terms of leaving contact information, I would just say, in the future, you can just reply to the email that you got. Why would this be, is my question? The school district is a public entity, and the school board is elected by the public. Why not include the public and other stakeholders in teams and committees about safety as required by NISA? These are important questions and causes for concern among the community. Because the current Board of Ed apparently does not feel any obligation, I hope that new school board members will guide the district administrators to reconsider their decision to exclude community members in their future committees and teams. Our children are much too important to ignore any valuable resource that can contribute to the safety of our schools. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Patrick Henley. I ran cross-country for four years and track for five years at Suffolk High School. I think by my shirt, y'all know how I feel about this. Joe said everything I wanted to say, but, so I'm going to talk about the logistics of having a coach coach two varsity teams, especially in cross-country. In track, we have one distance head coach. I understand you can't have eight head coaches for every event, so that's all right. But when I was there, we had a very good girls' team, guys' team wasn't as strong. That's because the girls, they all, we did girls' training. Girls and guys need separate training, especially in cross-country. The guys need to be doing 50 miles a week. The girls on our, on the team right now, they'll be doing like 20, max, and you want to talk, you have four coaches or whatever, one head coach, they're not all going to be there every day. The head coach is going to go to one gender, we all know that, not going to go to the other one. And you can't have, there's only one coach, one other guy, guys going 10-mile runs, girls going two. It's going to be a miserable mess. You can't, you have so many people on the road, you know, and nobody is. You can't, you can't do it. It doesn't work in track. Everybody, the whole team in track hated having one coach, because we did girls' training. You can see it in the results. We didn't do as well during indoor track as we did during cross-country. We did girls' training. You can't have one coach coach two genders. They need to be separated. Doesn't work. Thank you.
Hey, not seeing anybody else last call. Okay, we'll close public participation. Dr. Adams, any additional supervisory comments?
No.
So, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Moved, moved. Thank you, Monty. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Meeting is adjourned.